Okay, let's see, you know a lot, Facebook better not be.
Okay. Are we on? Okay, I'd like to call this public hearing to order is five thirty-two actually on December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. There is a full, I mean, we do have a quorum present. We have two council members missing, but we still have a quorum. This is a public hearing for the Community Resilience, Resiliency Program Grant Application. This is a grant opportunity that was brought forth by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. And the grant, it can be up from five hundred thousand up to five million dollars. It cannot be used for infrastructure. This is not an infrastructure grant. So we can't, we can't apply for roads or anything like that, but this, this was an opportunity. You look at, this is COVID-related stuff, so you look like down at this third paragraph where it says, "Due to COVID-nineteen pandemic, non-congregate homeless shelters, health clinics and facilities, medical facilities, domestic violence facilities and senior centers have been required to reduce capacity and to service to, and service to clients and establish non-congregative shelter options to adhere to CDC guidelines and social distancing. CRP funds will allow low to, and moderate income areas, which we are fifty-seven percent low to mod, which is a big factor in, in our ability to get money, to prepare, prevent and respond to COVID-nineteen or a future pandemic. Many rural and smaller urban areas lacked capacity in these critical areas, which limited a quick, safe and effective response to the pandemic. Public family, uh, public facility structures can be modified or constructed with these funds to prevent the transmission of the coronavirus and allow for adequate social distancing or remote access. The minimum request amount per project is five hundred thousand and the ma, the maximum is five million. All op, application materials, including the NOFA, the, the application and required supporting documentation can be found at this website and will be discussed in detail during the CRP NOFA and Application Workshop webinar." Anyway, this is a kind of a little, very brief overview of what, what the possible uses are for this money. And for a long time, we have looked at, at the possibility of, of a community building. It also can, it also can include the acquisition of the property in order to be able to build the building. Wes and Lonnie Austin that owned the property upfront have, they, they were supposed to get together with the appraiser, property appraiser yesterday. I have not heard back from them as far as what they would consider for the purchase of the property that we feel we need. Remember, we talked to them at one point about three to four acres. We're looking at about four acres. We thought at that time that they would be donating the property. What we're, what we're looking at is, you know, we're just looking to see what they'll sell it for. So I haven't heard back from them as far as that is concerned. We, I have talked to the administrator of the hospital to see if we could include at least a small clinic area within the building, which would fit in with the guidelines here. And she's willing to give us a letter in support of, you know, saying that, that they will operate the clinic under the hospital umbrella. And not, it won't necessarily at this point be like a full-time clinic, but maybe they might be out here and man it once a week or something. So we're sitting down with the hospital administr, administrators, see what that would look like. But that's one of the things that we, we had in mind to include in the, in the grant application. Other thing that we had, help me. Another thing that's, that's emphasized all over the place is broadband and having facilities where internet is provided. So that was another thing that, that we wanted to emphasize in the structure. And David, did you want to include some of the things that we've talked about as far as?
Well, in the, in the initial outline of the spaces that we were hoping to include, I know we talked about educational facilities, classrooms, so that we could potentially see if we could get some of the, the local educational systems such as Angelina onboard with, using us as a remote center.
Yes, definitely Angelina College is interested and they'll provide us with, you know, like a letter saying that they would like to, you know, they, they would be open. It would be like vocational training. To, and, and the reason for that and the validation for that would be financial or economic recovery and getting people trained to get back into the workforce, because that's another thing that's happening right now. The workforce is very slim and, and a lot of people around here could use some vocational training. So that's another plus, I think, for the grant. But in Ange, we've been, been in conversation with people from Angelina College and they are very open to providing class or doing the class, the teaching here in Ivanhoe. Anyway, go ahead, David. I'm sorry to.
No, that was about it. We had, we had covered the, the medical, the potential of a, a clinic space. Of course, at the core, an emergency operations center and, and shelter area, which is something that the, the entire county has a shortage of space for. And so we don't actually have much more space than what we're sitting in right now as far as the city of Ivanhoe goes. So that would be something that would be truly beneficial, because we all know that it's only a matter of, you know, only a matter of time before we have another crisis where we need to have a space. And so if we can provide that for our community and get it funded, it'd be, be excellent.
Yeah, this is all about emergency preparedness. And I just want to mention that I called Valerie Weber in. She's an architect, for those that may not realize it. And she's absolutely amazing and she's been doing drawings and every time we have to, we keep changing things, she has to go back to the drawing board. And what she's come up with is fabulous. And now we have to go back to the drawing board again, because what we, you know, you can dream and dreams are unlimited and they told us that, you know, our dream was about ten million instead of five million. So it's like back to the drawing board, but anyway. Are, are there any comments from the public or comments from council?
Hi Tommy.
How about elder health and exercise classes?
Yes, that's another thing that they talked about was, how did they say it, senior activities. And, and that was another thing that we had in there was an area for exercise for, you know.
Kind of a, we, we had a, a notion for a physical fitness center, you know, people could go and work out and train and stay healthy and fit. I think the big question right now is looking at the budget that we're going to be constrained to five million dollars. With the square footage that we would like to have, it doesn't seem like that's necessarily going to be.
What square footage were you talking about?
When we did the, the rough estimate, we were looking at about twenty-five thousand square feet, including education, clinic space. Yeah, event and emergency shelter space. So what we'll have to look at is how we can get creative with the budget that we have and get the most out of the space. Maybe work towards making some of these spaces multi-use. You know, certainly you can, you can hold classes and aerobics and different types of events in similar spaces.
Well, you have to make sure that it's going to be something that's self-sustaining. So, so that's the reason for the event space too. You, you prevent, you know, so that it can be an income producer.
Dress some amount of revenue.
Yeah, we're looking at all.
What is the square footage going right now and build up?
Oh, yes. The other thing was the library. It would include a library. Yeah, jump right in Valerie. This is a public hearing. This is.
Can we have one conversation please?
Sure.
Can we have one conversation, please?
Well, yeah. If you have five million dollars and it costs two hundred and fifty thou, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, that's only twenty thousand square feet. But you have to buy the building, have to buy the land, you have to build it. So I don't know, we may end up with less than ten thousand square feet.
I think that's probably about the number that we may end up with. I think the, the rough estimate for cost per square foot is going to be somewhere in the range of three fifteen to three hundred and fifty per square feet, maybe around three twenty-five. That's the number that we keep hearing.
Yeah. So like I say, it's back to the drawing.
Carport.
Now, one thing that they did mention today was that, the, the, because it does have to have, of course, an emergency generator. Otherwise it wouldn't be an emergency operations center. So the emergency generator by the time, the generator itself was like forty thousand dollars. And by the time you do all the additional stuff, it's almost a hundred thousand dollars for a commercial setup. You know, the switch Dawn was saying, you know, was saying it was about twenty-five thousand for the, you know, the automatic switch to turn it on. Anyway, the whole generator cost came up to about a hundred thousand dollars, but some of that other money that we have can be utilized for that too. So anyway, we're looking at at, at different options. And like David said, we're looking at probably ten to twelve thousand square feet. Wow. I was, this, this building is fifty feet wide and each section is twenty-five feet. And so it's actually seventy-five by fifty and that's eighteen hundred and seventy-five square feet. So ten thousand is pretty big. You know, it, it doesn't sound like much when we came up with all of those different figures, but when you look at that, it's like, okay, that's.
Four times this size.
Yeah.
Well, you can have multiple uses out of each room or facility.
Right, right. So that's what that's about. Now, this is a public hearing and I'm asking for input from people or comments about.
How often is this building going to be used?
Well, hopefully.
Every day.
It would be used on a, you know, a regular basis. And in order to, to be self-sustaining, of course, it would need to be used as much as possible. And the idea is, is to get it used as much as possible.
Who all would be using it then?
Well, as far as the event center, it would be public. You know, it would be open for rental. One of the things that we had in it was like a coffee shop area. My idea for the lobby was having like a, a gallery with gift shop type thing with the different products from around here. And my thinking with the coffee shop, which, which would be wifi, you know, would have wifi so people could come in and use the internet, was also being able to lease that space out and let somebody put their little coffee shop in there, little lunch area or whatever. And that could be an income producer also. So you have to look at the way we can, we can create income from the, to, to support it.
Then what would you do with this building?
Oh, this building would remain, we can't put city council offices in it.
Nor law enforcement.
Nor law enforcement. It cannot be used for that. You can use it for emergency operations. You can use it for community building, but you cannot house your offices in it.
This building?
No, the, the building. What about this one? Well, it would remain, our offices would remain here.
City council will still be here.
Yeah. But we can't house it up there. So basically what I'm saying is that we would stay here. We're finding that we're outgrowing the space. You know, that's obvious. We got a conference room over here now. It's not a room, but we got a conference table over there. It's not enclosed, but it's there. So anyway. If there's no, if there are no other questions or comments, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And once we have more of a solid idea, then we'll get together and talk about the details of it. But right now it's.
Still in concept.
Yeah, it's still in concept. The deadline is January nineteenth for the submission of the grant application. So we're under a, you know, we're under the wire, but if you don't apply, you don't get anything. You never can tell. And Jackie did do coffee.
Thank you, Jack.
Brother Blackstone.
Oh, yeah. So you don't want to do the meeting either? Why don't we just leave? Saturday. See, I've got Chris's car. That's why I was going to leave you the city car. I've got Chris's cars. Well, then take me home. Yeah, by the time this is over.
I saw David, told him he needs to go.
That's why I, I thought it would be more comfortable in Chris's car.
He didn't, didn't call me, so I guess he's going to do it on the hard-headed little sand.
What's wrong with your foot? Did you step on it? How'd you do that?
Need to be more careful.
It looks like there's something, especially the city car. Yeah, no, I, I'll get it to you because I don't need it. And if your eyes are, you know. If your eyes okay, when, when the meeting's over, they'll all just, you drop me off at the house or whatever, you call. No problem. They told, they told Chris the meeting, the, the closing was supposed to be at two o'clock this afternoon. First it was nine thirty, then it's two o'clock. So, and he had told them, you have to give me two and a half hours' notice because I'm far away.
I would love my new glasses to get here. I can hardly read.
When are they going to get here?
They're, they're, they're being made, they're going to be made.
He has to be, he has to be back there by Saturday.
And how's that happening?
See, there, there's always the last few things that didn't make it in.
Oh, the VA.
They're too big to put in a car. But that's, that's why he wanted to borrow the truck, because there's just a. I don't know why you didn't, because I mean, that, I was all prepared to leave. I, I totally get it. A suburban with bash thing like that? Suburban and hit the car, oh. Yeah, it's like a, it's like a bulldozer.
Yeah, right, right, right.
That's awful. You know, in these things, what we get, these things when this happens around Christmas, I think about families and what they go through. It's like Johnny going through this. And I, in, and you know, in the city car, yeah, in the city car is.
Care to dance?
I looked in the back before. There's Missy's. How much can you take without just going to dessert?
Patsy.
Okay, who's going to do our invocation? Oh, that's right, Patsy's there. I see her and then I don't. You know.
We think, I think they set us close to each other but far enough away that where we can't really talk.
So what do you think about this cen, what do you think about this center?
You know, if it doesn't cost anything, then we're just hurt. You know, free money's free money. You just have to spend it the way that it's detailed, but. You know, I think that, you know, explaining that goes a long way towards accepting the fact that the money's not being misappropriated. Especially considering the shape that one.
Yeah. I gotta, I gotta make sure we don't have a match to it.
Oh, yeah, there's that also.
But then again, when you get into it. The utilities, the insurance, the maintenance.
That's what, that's what CD just was still talking to me about, you know, as we're going up, that what about electricity? And this, this building was like two hundred dollars a month. What's a ten thousand square foot building going to run on?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's what he was bringing up to me.
Okay.
Okay.
His budget was supposed to be ninety-four hours. I told him that, too. I told him, I told him. I told him. Oh, yeah, I told him, I told him.
All right. Are we ready? Are we on? Uh, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, let's see time. It's actually five fifty-nine. And we are online? Uh, Jackie? Okay. All right, this, it's almost six o'clock. This is our regular council meeting for December's of twenty twenty-one, it's December sixteenth at six P.M. We do have a, a quorum present. Uh, we are missing Councilman John Craven, and I would like to, I imagine everybody in Ivanhoe knows by now that, uh, Lee Craven passed yesterday morning. It's a tremendous loss for our community. Uh, I don't wanna talk too much, 'cause I think I might break up, so, uh, but anyway, but... Shoot, that's why John's not here. Um, I would like to ask, uh, Patsy Morris if she would do our invocation, and that's followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Uh, holy and precious God, we trust you in our sad hearts, that philosopher, dear Lee. You are such an instrumental part of, of this community as is, uh, Johnman. And Father, we ask you to, uh, bring them peace, uh, and healing and, and blessings at this really difficult time. And to also be with the Sikores, the loss of, of Karen's brother. Father, there's never a good time to lose somebody that we love, but it's particularly difficult at Christmas time when we're all celebrating. But, God, here's the thing. We know that you love us. You've shown that by sending your son, sending Christ, but to be the light of the world. So, Father, we really need that light right now to remind us of the importance of, of, of caring for one another. Uh, we thank you for this community, we thank you for the people who are willing to, uh, work to, to help, uh, this community make progress. Let us all love one another, Father, and support one another in all that we do. Thanks again for this day. Uh, forgive us when we fail you, and we know you do. Thank you for doing that. Help us to do your will at, at all times, Father, to seek it and to do it. Thanks again, God, for loving us. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, we, uh, because of COVID, uh, COVID outbreak in our offices, uh, last month's city council meeting was actually postponed, uh, canceled. You can't even say postponed, it began, it was canceled. And so what we're going to do tonight is, uh, swear in our newly elected council members. So I would like to call Judge Rader up, who is gonna do the honors for us.
Okay, how do we wanna do this? You guys wanna get up there?
Yeah, I think that's good, yeah. Get them up here and make, make them stand in public. Right in front of the camera.
Is that in front of the firing squad?
Is this on? Hello?
Yeah, just take that out of... David.
Do you have a box to stand on, so you'll be a little taller? Do you have a box, you'd be the same height as them?
I am standing up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, first of all, congratulations on your reelection. Uh, I'm gonna read for, uh, we're gonna do two, um... Two what? Oh, yeah, a statement and an oath, so I'm gonna do the statement first. And I'm gonna have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I...
Aye.
Your name. Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I have not directly...
I have not directly...
Or indirectly paid...
Or indirectly paid.
Offered, promised to pay...
Offered, promised to pay.
Contributed or promised to contribute...
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value...
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office...
Or promised any public office.
Or employment for the giving...
Or employment for the giving.
Or withholding of a vote...
Or withholding of a vote.
At which I was elected...
At which I was elected.
Or as a reward...
Or as a reward.
To secure my appointment...
To secure my appointment.
Or confirmation...
Or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be...
Whichever the case may be.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Okay. Now the oath of office. Same thing, raise your right hand. I...
Aye.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of council member...
The duties of the office of council member.
Of the City of Ivanhoe...
Of the City of Ivanhoe.
And will, to the best of my ability...
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and of this state.
Of the United States and of this state.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
All right, that'll do it. Right. Okay. Thank you, Judge, and congratulations to new council members. That aren't so new. Uh, did anyone sign up for communications in the audience? Made C.D. run. Okay. Moving along to consent agenda items, is there anyone that would like anything removed from the consent agenda? Is there any objection to the, uh, the adoption of the consent agenda? There being none, the consent agenda is adopted, and we're moving right along to number one, Consider for Discussion Action Ordinance Number twenty twenty-two dash one, declaring and accepting the results of the November second, twenty twenty-one election canvas for council positions. Who was on the canvas? It was John and who else? Yeah. Would you like to do this report of the canvas?
Sure. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash one, an ordinance of the City Council for the City of Ivanhoe declaring the results of the November second, twenty twenty-one city council election. Whereas the City of Ivanhoe ordered an in general election for November second, twenty twenty-one, calling for election of three council members. And whereas in early voting, one hundred seventy-eight were cast, thirty-seven votes by mail, mail-in ballot, and a total of a hundred and seventy-four votes were cast in precinct three box on election day, for a total of three hundred and eighty-nine votes being cast. And whereas for council positions, Skip Blackstone received a hundred and twenty-six total votes. Tommy Morris received a hundred and six votes. David Harrington received a hundred and five total votes, and Laura Cleveland, Frigga, 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 uh...
Frigga.
Received fifty-two total votes. Whereas results of election were canvassed on November twenty twenty-one, as required by State Election Code six seven oh, oh-three. And whereas for the purpose of bank signatory and other official business of the City of Ivanhoe, Skip Blackstone, Tommy Morris, and David Harrington were elected as city council members on November second, twenty twenty-one election now. Therefore, at the election canvas meeting of the City Council of the City of Ivanhoe, this ordinance declared the results of November second, twenty twenty-one election of three council members as detailed within and passed, approved, and adopted sixteenth day of December, twenty twenty-one.
Uh, would you like to put that in the form of a motion to adopt?
I make a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-two dash one.
Do I hear a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mayor's report. Well, as I mentioned earlier, uh, Lee did pass yesterday, and I, we got an email from Johnny saying this, "A celebration of life will be held Saturday at three P.M. at Riley Funeral Home Chapel. Visitation will be held from, at two P.M. at the same day." So that's at Riley's Funeral Home, and he also said flowers are greatly appreciated, but donations made to the American Cancer Society or the First Baptist Church in Woodville in our, in our loved one's name will, would be a blessing, so that's FYI. Uh, the other thing is, Patsy just told me Karen Sikora's brother was in a, a truck accident today and, and passed. So prayers for Ron and Karen and, and their family. Okay, moving along, um, it's been a while since we've had a council meeting, it's been almost, it's two months. Uh, we did in that interim have a kickoff of, uh, with GLO in, for the eleven and a half million dollar grant. It was interesting, to say the least, and I don't know if any of the council members wanna make any comments about that kickoff meeting. They, there was a local GLO representative that was on, uh, on the call and basically, uh, uh, explained to all, us all the different steps that are gonna be required as we move forward with this grant. The one thing that, that I did ask, 'cause we, we were really interested to know if we're gonna be doing it in three different parts, there, 'cause there's three different dams that are gonna be worked on, or three different locations that are gonna be worked. And so, uh, I wanted to know specifically if we could do the land acquisition in, in three different parts, so that we could deal with each section separately, and they said yes, that that was fine, that we could do it that way. So we don't have to get all that stuff together at one time. It'll give us a little more oppor, uh, opportunity to talk and to explain things to everybody, to, to our community, and to get those meetings together that need to be done. Any other comments about what the, that... For the public? No, okay.
It was that we were gonna start with Camelot Dam first.
Oh, yes, we are going to start in the Camelot, because that's the back. We figured the best thing to do is work from the back forward, because, uh, you don't wanna just build a new dam and ha, then have a bunch of heavy equipment running, running over it. Let's avoid that as much as possible. So we are starting, starting from the back, so we'll do that one, Tristan, and then the last one would be up front. Uh, although that's, that's off the beaten path anyway, but I think that's, that's the order that we're talking about. Next, we had a very successful boat parade this last Saturday, and I can't say enough about, uh, the organization. Uh, Kelly Scroggins, and if you haven't met Kelly, she's a ball of fire, she's amazing. And she got a bunch of people that had never been involved in anything, uh, going, and, and, which is great. And so I wanna recognize Kelly, Maggie, uh, Maggie Gilli, Misha Smith, uh, Debbie Converse, and of course Suzie Fortenberry was in on that, she's done a lot of stuff, but those, those other ladies have not been involved before, and the cool thing is, as soon as the thing was over there saying, "Okay, next year we're gonna do this, and next year we're gonna do that," so it's taking on a life of its own. The parade was fabulous, people went crazy with the lights, 'cause Kelly said, you know, "I put my normal announcement out there and every, oh, yeah." And Kelly says, "It's gonna be a contest, 'cause if it's a contest, I can really get into it," you know? So, I mean, people went crazy with those lights. And it was, it was phenomenal, we had thirteen boats, and it was good, and, and anyway, it was, it was really good. Our judges for the event were Jacque Blanchett, uh, Wild Bill from the restaurant, Lisa Richardson, and there was one other person, and I wasn't here for the judging, but that was really nice, too, that they all, they came out and they had, they had a good time judging. I want to recognize Gwen Wiegand, she's our resident that brings in all these beautiful Christmas decorations, whatever holiday, Gwen, Gwen has the decorations, and she brings them in. She always makes it beautiful at Valentine's Day, Christmas time, whatever, and so I really wanna recognize Gwen. I wanna recognize Heidi, and I don't, I don't know what Heidi's last name is, but she's the one that just, on her own, went up there and decorated the substation, all those lights up front. And I thought it was the association, I came Saturday and thanking everybody, and they said it wasn't us. I mean, she did a beautiful job, and, and I was just so blown away, and just on her own, so that, that's really wonderful to bring that Christmas spirit. And so I appreciate her, and I do wanna appreciate Jackie Black, if you haven't met Jackie Black, she's, uh, our clerical assistant now, I guess you'd call her, she's... She, talk about a ball of fire, this one. And, uh, she just took it upon herself to decorate the office and get things done, and, and so I wanna, you know, appreciate Jackie for that and recognize her for that. I think that's about it, we have gone up for procurement for an engineer for our project that, that, um... That we have coming up for the grant application, so that's, uh, we will be letting you know when we're going to have, uh, bid opening, so that we can have, uh... The twenty, the twenty-third at four o'clock is bid opening. Okay, I think that's all I have to report. Consider for Discussion Action Supervisor of Dams' report, and I don't see Rusty here. Uh, there wasn't, there isn't anything of significance, I don't think, anyway, but, um, moving along to municipal...
On the dams, Mayor, do we still have the ten thousand for those trees? Be removed? Okay.
I think that's what you and Rusty had determined, right?
Right.
Right.
I'm gonna get that project going.
Well, yeah, that's a good idea. Number four is municipal court activity, Judge, would you like to give your report?
Okay, I have two months' worth of report. Uh, wait, I need my glasses.
Oops.
Oh, now I can see so much better.
Okay, um, for October. Total fines that we collected was, uh, one thousand two hundred and nine dollars. Uh, seven hundred and ninety-nine of that was retained by the city, four hundred and ten dollars went to the state. Um, in the fiscal year to date, uh, fines collected was one thousand two hundred and nine. And then the previous fiscal year to date was five hundred and sixty-two. Magistrate activity, um, three classy misdemeanor warnings, uh, by Judge Haney, and one felony by Judge Haney. Okay, for November, the total fines and court costs collected was one thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. The city retained one thousand forty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Uh, we sent six hundred and forty-three dollars to the state, and two hundred and sixty-four dollars went to our collection agency. Uh, so the fiscal year to date, three thousand one hundred and fifty-eight. The previous fiscal year was one thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars. And that is my report. Any questions?
No, thank you, Judge. Report on city marshal activity, I believe, Officer, uh, Drummond, but I mean, do I, I call you Deputy Marshal Drummond? Would you please come up here?
Or just sir?
Yeah, just...
Hi, sir.
How are you?
You probably need to point that microphone up a little bit, Kathy's a little bit shorter than you.
Oh, that's all right. All right, this is gonna be for, um, October and November. Uh, total of activity caused in the marshal's office was four hundred and fifty-eight. Total calls from the sheriff's office dispatch was thirty-eight. Chief Riley had a hundred and forty calls for service, most of those were gonna be code enforcement related. Uh, Deputy King had two hundred and fifty-nine calls for service. Uh, I had thirty calls for service, and Stephen, uh, Chief Deputy Hoke had eight, uh, calls, and then he's working with the DA's office as well. And, uh, I'm actually working on several open investigations that we have with the marshal's office right now. Uh, besides the normal routine of traffic, civil matters, harassment, uh, twenty code enforcements. Uh, warrants were conducted for outstanding warrants from other cities and out of the county warrants, and trying to make sure that pending cases are at the DA's office, and if you have any more questions at this time.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your service.
Thank you. And next is the Public Works Report, uh, David Marshall.
Who, who is that guy?
Who is that?
Mass man.
Yeah. Uh, hello, congratulations to the, uh, the new councilman. And, uh, congratulations to those that have to put up with him from time to time. We are still fighting the good fight. We, um, are trudging along, trying to play catch-up as usual. At this point, uh, we have six outstanding covert installs, um, thirty-one outstanding work orders, and, um, the, the normal FEMA activity that we take care of as we get to a lot of these places. It, it kind of folds in and, and rolls hand, hand in hand. I've changed up a few things, the way that we're doing business there, as far as internally goes, it, it's streamlining the system, makes it easier for the, uh, the employees, myself, uh, Jackie, has, has been phenomenal, and we're working closer together on, uh, the culverts and, and how to get these things taken care of, uh, much, much faster. Uh, other than that, uh, like I said, we're, we're just trudging along, fighting a good fight. Uh, any, any questions from you guys? No.
Much appreciated.
We're, we're doing culverts for the citizens.
Or these are road culverts you're talking about?
Both. You're talking about for the construction too? Yes, yes, these, these are both.
But people are paying their portion of the culvert.
If it's a customer, absolutely, the, the install fee and so forth.
Well, I knew at one time we weren't doing that, so.
Right.
So, so when a, when a citizen gets a culvert, you get reimbursed for that material, correct?
Yes. The way the prices have been fluctuating somewhat, we're, we're getting at least ninety percent back. Yeah, we're, we're still ahead of the game with that. And everybody seems to be happy to do so when they check around and find the prices from some of the private contractors that are running in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty-five hundred. And what does the city charge? Four hundred. So, it's a good deal.
I know that after the first of the year, at some point, we're going to be doing, doing roadwork. All those culverts. Bypass has been finished.
We've got to do a little more work on Galahad Loop, but that's, that's just getting it smooth. And again, on that, I know everybody's excited, but I know everybody's a little worried that we're involved with the detour. We're talking days, not, not months. We're talking days here, and the amount of traffic that are going to be on each of these, these, these detour routes is going to be minuscule compared to what it was before. I don't anticipate any problems whatsoever, but we, we are prepared, and, and will be even more prepared when they decide to start.
So I have just one quick question. If we're going to begin construction November the twenty-ninth, that's come and gone, do you have a tentative start date?
From what I understand, is, is sometime shortly after the first of the year.
January one, well, January, it'll be January two.
Okay.
I guess, I don't even know what day.
Let's just wait till next year.
We, we were about there.
They, they claim they can do it so long as the pavement is sixty degrees, and the temperature is forty degrees and rising, there will be no issues with, with their asphalt. As quickly as they get this done. If we catch a, a three-day strip, a week's strip of, of good weather, there, there should be.
Well, we-
I'm not going to say good weather in January, but warmer weather.
But, well, and what we saw was how fast they worked when it was durwood and, and the, and the sections in the back. This, this project up front was a different story, I mean. But, but that's one of the things they told us, that it doesn't take long to, to get that work done once they're in here.
The one up front had a lot of players in it.
Oh, yeah. Subcontractors and-
I don't anticipate any problems, but to answer your question, yes, we will be ready.
Okay, one other question, and that has to do with the project up front. Are they going to have to close the whole road, or just one half of it?
Just half.
Okay, thank you.
Just half. Talking about that one spot that, yeah. Just, just half. Okay?
And that's after the first of the year?
Yes, they're going to do that one as they come in and do the, the one at Camelot and towards the back that way. Okay?
Alright.
Alright.
Appreciate you David. Thank you. Next is report on code enforcement activity. Jackie, do you have a report for us?
I don't have an actual report. Can you hear me now? I don't have an actual report of numbers of how many cases, but we have been steadily, we implemented a postcard that we're sending out to the residents that have issues at the properties. We've got a great response from the little postcards that's being sent out. We've had people come in, they're fixing the problems prior to them actually getting a citation. We are following up with a lot of old cases, and steadily just trying to get through all of those. Hopefully we can get a stop put to the ones that's just hauling the stuff from one side of Ivanhoe to the other. But, besides that, we've just steadily been going through each case one by one and trying to get them fixed and, and help get them out.
Thank you Jackie. Any other questions, any questions for Jackie? She's doing a phenomenal job keeping up with, you know, going through all the stuff, and, and the little, the postcards were her idea, and it was very, and it's a very, very good idea, because it, it was something, it's not confrontational at all. It's just, we notice there's an issue, would you please come in and handle it, and it's working. So that's great. Considered discussion action planning and zoning commission recommendation, and I'm going to ask Valerie if she has anything that, from planning and zoning, since Johnny's not here.
Thank you Mayor, City Council. We looked at the possibility of moving a couple of the boundaries between zoning districts three and two, and we determined that twenty lots would be affected and would lose the ability to have manufactured homes and single-family camping on them. And we decided that it was not, not something we wanted to pursue at this time. So, we have left that as no action right now, to move the boundaries. Any questions?
Thank you Valerie.
One, one question. If we had decided to go ahead and do that, how many people would be affected?
Twenty lots.
Twenty lots, but are there people there that have campers, or?
I don't know what items are on those lots, but I know that in the future, they would not, you know, when the properties sell, they would not be able to have manufactured homes or single-family camping there.
But there are no manufactured homes at this time?
Not that I'm aware of, but I, we did not canvas, we did not physically go out and canvas the lots.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
We simply looked at the map. Is that it?
Thank you Valerie, appreciate it. Number nine, considered discussion action bids received for roof over the equipment shed at the Emily facility. I think all of you have seen the two bids that were, that were submitted. One was from Artisan Brothers for nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Mayor, I, I need to make sure that I make publicly known that I recuse myself on this particular item since I am employed by one of the companies giving a bid.
Okay, thank you David.
Thank you.
And then the other one is S&amp;S Fencing. They're the ones that did the fence by the other lay-down yard that we have. And they did do a great job. There's, there are the two bids. One is for nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars by Artisan Brothers, and the other one is for twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars from S&amp;S Fencing.
I think we need to get additional bids.
Yes, sir.
Skip, I know you and I talked, and you were preferring a, a bid from an actual roofer, or a roofing company.
Yes.
I have been trying for the last two months to get somebody to call me back. I've had two return. One said unequivocally, they won't do metal roofs, they just don't. The other one said, we're interested. Is this a new roof, is this a replacement? And I said, it's new. He said, how new? Said, you need to install the purlings and all. He said, we don't want to touch it. We don't, we don't do that. That seems to be the answer that I'm going to get. I've tried. I, I'm going to ask Council to, to, to look at these two hard. I think they're both good bids. A professional roofer, I would almost guarantee is going to be more. Especially one that deals with, with the metal roofs. David, you might think about that. The biggest problem I have is, is we have waited for over a year. We're looking at twenty-one thousand seven hundred some odd dollars and twenty thousand dollars, let's say, nineteen thousand seven fifty. We've been postponing this, postponing this. We've got approximately two hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment.
Seeing that-
It's out in the weather. We've got approximately twenty-five hundred dollars in just the pole barn itself. It's getting rained on in bad weather. Some of those are beginning to turn color. I want to make sure that they're still good. That was a phenomenal deal on the pole part. To me, and I don't think this, either one of these are a bad sum, to protect the city's investment in, in what we've had, and what we've got, what, what we went through to get this. So I ask y'all to take, take that in mind. If we have to have a, a third bid, if we absolutely need one, I will go further out from the Jasper-Woodville area and start hitting Houston and Lufkin and Beaumont. That's, that's on y'all, that's y'all's decision. If that's what you need, that's certainly what we'll do, whatever we need to do to get this done.
Thank you David.
You bet.
Let, let me ask you a question David. On the Lumberton Company, S&amp;S Fencing. Says twenty-five foot off-road lifts and quantity of two required. What is that?
Equipment rental.
Okay.
From what I can gather, I, I can verify that, but both companies are going to have to rent specialized equipment to, to get up that high to get on that-
Well, it's not a, you know, under Artiston's bid, it's not listed. Is that something they're going to add, or is that?
No, the only thing that both have said, that these bids are only good for about fourteen to fifteen days. The price of metal continues to skyrocket. So, the whole thing would probably have to be bid over unless they redo it with perhaps a ten percent. One way or the other, fifteen percent.
I can, I can get our panel for two dollars and seventy-five cents a running foot, three foot wide. And it's in stock.
Okay, remember what gauge?
Twenty-six.
Okay. What these guys, if they were going twenty-nine or twenty-six?
It was twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay, yeah, okay. And this is maybe something we could work with them on to, to help cut a little cost.
You're six to eight, six to eight weeks out. Here it says six to eight weeks out on materials from Artiston Brothers. And you said the bid's only good for ten to fifteen days?
That's what both of them said.
Well, this one was eleven-ten, and the other one was?
Ten-twenty-seven.
Ten-twenty-seven.
Right, right.
So these are already outdated bids?
Right. How much so? I don't know.
So, I mean, before we even make a decision, we have to have a current bid?
Absolutely. I, I was kind of waiting on you guys to see.
So we waited another month?
We can do a special. I'll, I'll get with you and we'll go-
Okay, okay.
Get into the-
The meat of the matter?
The minutia.
Okay. We can, we can certainly do that. Yeah, you know, and, and I certainly agree with them, not taking sides, but the price of material is just so up and down right now. It, it's-
I mean, I'd hate to prove a bid and find out that it's gone up.
Sure, and we need to know how much.
How much?
But, but there again, if we get this next week, we got ten, fifteen days, fourteen or fifteen days to make a decision. It would probably involve a, a special meeting or something like that. I mean, if y'all are fine with it, I'm great with it.
I mean, I don't mind doing so.
Yeah, we've got to get a, a more permanent fixture price on this thing too.
And I'd go back to Artiston Brothers and ask if there's equipment rental in this. And I'd find out about this twenty-five foot off-road lift.
Okay, okay.
That'd be my, my recommendation.
Okay, we can do that, absolutely.
We need a little more detail.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to have that wrote down by cost of materials and, and then later.
Just get more detail.
Yeah, just saying, you know, twenty thousand dollars.
Yes.
What are we getting for that?
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, but the bid is-
I mean, they, they list purlings and so forth.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's really not much more to it than that. The purlings, the, the metal, and that's the equipment to put it up with. I mean, it's not a fancy roof. It's just, just protection, but yeah, we can, we can start working on it.
I had a method of transport, I could get you the material tomorrow.
Okay, good.
And then, what budget does this come out of? Is this your budget?
It's the capital improvement.
Capital improvement, okay.
Yeah, you'd make me think. But that's what it is.
Okay.
So we still have-
Okay, so this, this item will be postponed?
I make a motion we postpone this item until we get more detail.
And as soon as I get those in greater detail, I will, I will furnish y'all a comment.
I'll get with you, and we can work this together and see what-
I appreciate all the help I can get.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we, as soon as we get in the bids the right way, that we have special council meeting.
I completely agree.
I didn't hear it. Okay, thank you.
I second it.
Okay.
Good, good.
Okay, that's Will's motion.
Yes. Mine will be the same.
Right, okay. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposed? And did you want to enter another motion?
No, that was good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks David.
Number ten is considered discussion action resolution twenty-two-two-three-R. Approving Texas General Land Office contract documents and authorizing mayor as signatory on GLO grant documents. Those are the, this is for the, the eleven and a half million dollar grant. And there's a need for, to authorize me to be able to sign the documents as they come in, and me and Tommy. Mayor and Mayor Pro Tim. It's, and City Secretary to be authorized to execute the financial documents required for requesting funds approved by twenty-two community center, or Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program.
So that would be each of y'all's signatures, or individual signatures would be accepted, that's?
It's contractual documents.
I, I make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty-two-two-four-R.
Three-R.
Alright. I stand corrected. Resolution twenty-two-two-three-R.
Thank you sir. Okay, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Number eleven is considered discussion action resolution twenty-two-two-four-R. Authorizing submission of Texas Community Resiliency Program Grant Application to the Texas Department of Housing and the Community Affairs. This is the, this is the resolution to submit the, the grant application that we were talking about earlier. And we kind of have to do that now in order to be, you know, authorizing the submission of the grant application.
That's the one that's five hundred, thousand to five million max, okay.
And the thing with this, if we decide that we don't, you know, if we submit a grant and we didn't, and, and they say, yeah, you got the grant, and we don't want to do it, we can always back out. That's always an option. But we do have to have the authority to submit the application.
It's hard to turn away free money.
Hey. That's the way I look at it. So this is the resolution actually to, to authorize us to submit the application. So do I ever-
I'll make a motion that we, resolution twenty-two-two-four-R, to submit the application for that grant.
Okay, second. Second. Any questions?
I'm at, one question on that Mayor. When we look at this grant, and we're talking about a building of ten thousand square feet. When we talk about this building, I think that we need to talk about the cost of electricity for a ten thousand square foot building, because we pay-
Insurance and maintenance.
Insurance and maintenance and-
Exactly.
Because we pay five hundred dollars a month for here. So that's going to be four times as much, five times as much up there. And who's going to maintain the grounds, and who's going to maintain the building? Ten thousand square feet's a big building. So it's the only thing we need to think about, because that's going to come back into our budget.
Right.
So whenever we talk about all that, I think that's something we need to look down the road as well.
Oh, absolutely. That's definitely going to be taken into consideration. Okay.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, I get it.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twelve, considered for discussion action adoption of resolution twenty-two-two-five-R. Designating Kathy Bennett as representative from the City of Ivanhoe and the Tyler County Appraisal Board. My term is up for renewal as of the end of the year, so it's a resolution appointing me as a Ivanhoe representative on the appraisal board. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
I make a motion we adopt resolution twenty-two-two-five-R.
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question Mayor.
Sure.
What do you do on this board? I should have asked this before. What is your, what is your role in the appraisal board?
Well, I don't have, I'm not an officer. There, each taxing entity has a representative on the appraisal board. And I, I am there representing Ivanhoe. We, for example, the board was, was the entity, we are the ones that look at the budget for the, the appraisal board. We are the ones that hired the, the chief appraiser when we had, you know, when we had to get, let the other one go. We, they report to us each month, and we kind of oversee, we-
You establish, you help them establish property values? You establish, you help them establish property values?
It's kinda like, what does a hospital board do? What is an appraisal, you know, it's, we're not hands-on doing anything with the appraising. But, for example, they presented us with the audit last month, because each year they have an audit, like we have an audit. And somebody comes in, presents the audit to the council here, and the board acts in that function, they represent, they present the audit, and we look at, uh, you know, and approve or not approve, and, and basically we approve or not approve the budget.
So if somebody comes in and protests their property values, are you part of that?
No. You can't, an elected official cannot be a part of that. We do have a representative right now on that, and that's Suzy Fortenberry. That's a separate, that's what they call the appraisal review board. And currently, there are members also representing each of the different taxing entities. Now, there was some legislation, uh, in this past legislative session that said that the district judges were going to appoint the members of the ARBs, which doesn't make any sense, because district judges don't necessarily know the people around here, but, you know, we just are gonna do what we do, and, and... So, right now, the only thing that we can do is let them know who is currently serving, who might be willing to serve, but it's the district judge now that's going to be the one that approves or appoints, actually, and that's Texas law.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're very welcome. Yeah, no one that, that, no elected official that, from a taxing entity can serve, because that would be a conflict of interest major. Okay, number twelve, good, good question, though.
We, we had voted.
Oh, we did number, oh, that's right, we didn't vote. Okay, we...
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No ma'am.
Number thirteen, Consider For Discussion Action Adoption of Resolution 2022-6R, Body-Worn Program Grant Application and Office, and Office of the Governor Implementation Requirements. And this is by the Marshal's Office, and Jackie has actually submitted the application, right?
Just for body armor?
Body cameras.
Cameras, okay.
Yeah, so it's a grand opportunity out there for that, and so it's approving the submission of that grant application. That's 2022-6R. Boy, we've done a lot tonight. Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt that resolution?
I'm making a motion to adopt that resolution, Mayor.
Second.
Uh, all in, any questions about this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, um, number fourteen, Consider For Discussion Action Financial Report for September, and we've got fifteen in October and sixteen in November, and so we're just gonna let CD have the floor for an hour.
Talk fast, CD.
I make a motion, we limit CD to four minutes and thirty-nine seconds.
Talk fast.
Wow, we are almost to the end of a calendar year, and this is three months' worth of, of financial statements, because September, I asked the council to hold on that, because we had just gotten the information from the accountant. I hadn't had a chance to review it. Since then, we did not have the council meeting in November, so here we are with three months' worth to deal with. Hopefully, by now, the council has gotten somewhat acclimated to the new forms that comes from the accountant, and I am in less of a hands-on role. Now, I do get the deposits ready, and either myself or the mayor will get those into the bank. I print the checks, two members of the council signs those, verifies that it's a legitimate cost that the city has incurred, and we're paying our bill. So what you look at is basically what I see. The mayor and I had a visit with Shirley Andrew about a week and a half ago, something like that, in regards to, uh, the budget that has been set. It was five hundred dollars off, and it turns out that that was because in the budget that I had sent her, it was an early preparation budget, and it included an additional five hundred dollars for training that was not approved by the council in the final budget. So we got that part cleared, and so now we have a bud, a balanced budget that the, that the city's... When I say balanced, there's going to be more expenditures than income that's been proposed, and that's how the budget was set up, because we knew we had carryover from 2021 over to 2022, and part of that will be used for the capital improvements purchase part of the budget, so...
So that's an unbalanced budget?
An unbalanced budget, but for the, for the spreadsheet that the council sees, it will turn out to be balanced that way. So, that being said, I ran you copies of the end of November for showing the budget, and for some reason, I can't put my finger on it. So you're going to have to, where did it go? There it is. Okay, I thank you, I found it. Okay. I'm, I'm still getting somewhat used to this, so I just ignore that first set of columns there that shows our expenditures for November. The actual cost is what we look at, because that was our, our expenses for the month.
Which column do you focus on?
The final four columns, where it says actual compared to the budget. And whether we're over budget or under budget, or the percent of the budget that's been utilized for that. That first four columns, where you see the, the budget amount for that particular, uh, line item, it's split into twelve equal amounts. Well, the city doesn't work that way. For example, on our income level, we'll get a huge amount of our income for the year over the next two months, this month, next month, and then to February, because most folks will pay their property tax in December or about the end of January, for sure, otherwise then it goes to where penalties and interest accrue. So we'll have a huge inflow of money over those months, and then it gets kinda trickled down through the rest of the year. So dividing that by twelve does make sense, and that's why I don't pay that close attention to those, those items where it's budget, and whether it's over budget or under budget on that for November, in this case. But I do look at where we stand in that total, the four columns there where it shows the total, because that gives us an idea of where we stand, um, from the historical perspective, looking at what has happened to us this month. And I'm going to let the council ask any questions that they might have, and if I can't answer them, then I'm going to get Shirley to respond, and so I can get the answers for you.
Let's just take one line, like the top line on those four columns to the right.
Okay, the current year tax.
Yeah, walk me through what those numbers mean.
Okay, the budget for the current year tax was established by the council at five hundred and one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Okay, our actual income in November was that column just before the budget. Uh, four hu, uh, four thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and eight cents. Now, you see that over budget? Well, uh, we didn't come close to meeting what we were, she had it set up for forty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventeen cents. Or that's where the program operates, that's back over there under that November.
That we should divide by twelve?
Right.
Okay.
Now, next month, you will see a huge overage, because we'll be getting probably eighty percent of our income, in the December and January, I'll see, I won't, it will be closer probably for next month, around thirty percent, and then we'll really see it hit when we get to the February payment that came in in January.
That helps a lot, thank you.
Okay, um, now, for the, the actual budget, the council put together the current year tax, current year tax penalty, and the current year tax interest for the income for the year. The delinquent tax, delinquent tax penalty, and delinquent tax interest, those were also factored into the budget, but they're not standalone line items in the city's budget. Shirley broke those out in this, because that's how we get it from the appraisal, I mean, from the tax assessor collector. We have to do that, because a part of the ad valorem's that we get in, um, is split between our general fund amount and the amount that has to be collected to cover the bond repayment, the interest and sinking. So, um, that's why it's split out, and all those, and believe me, whenever I go through and enter that deposit, there's twelve line items that I have to put into QuickBooks in order for it to show up here. So, uh, all of these, and then the, the interest and sinking fund. So, um, hopefully, that kinda helps clarify a little bit on, on what all these columns mean.
Yes, sir.
And, but, I'm always willing to sit down and go over, um, these spreadsheets. Anytime you come by, I'll drop whatever's going on, and we'll discuss it. Um, one thing that, that our outside auditor focused on after the last audit, and I'll get back to the coming year audit, or 2020's audit, when they get to us, and that might be in the next couple of weeks, because they like to catch us during the Christmas, uh, or around the holiday, because all their work for the school districts that they're involved with kinda comes to a halt, schools are closed, and so then they turn to us. So you might be seeing the lights on late up here sometime next few weeks. Yes, sir?
Where is the capital expenditure line item on here?
Uh, let's see, if we can't find it real quick. It's gonna be in the nine thousand, so it's gonna be close to the back there. Okay, this one is not showing the nine thousand category.
We just go to seven?
I'm sorry?
We just go to seven, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
We haven't spent anything out of the capital improvement fund yet this year. That's probably why it's not on there. There have been no expenditures.
Yeah.
All right.
Because these are just active accounts.
We'll spend a dollar.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Why do we not have a Monarch water franchise fee? We, we collect one for electricity, garbage, phone. Why do we not collect something for Monarch?
Because they would, they would pass that, uh, item directly onto the, the customer, and it would just raise our water bill, and our water rates are already outrageous.
Well, they've got real bill, that's another, another disco time for discussion, but...
Yeah.
They, they can't get their billing straight either.
I know.
Yeah, we do have folks calling on a regular basis about their billing issues, um, and that's something that we really, I mean, we can talk to them about, but until they get their act together in Dallas or Sugar Land...
I'm gonna be contacting TECQ personally about the quality of mine, but that's another, it's not on the agenda for, for tonight.
Water quality, yeah, that would be TECQ, uh, on the rates and all like that, that's the Public Utility Commission.
Yeah.
Um, okay, along with your handout, there was another, I think, thirteen pages.
Yeah, yeah.
That covers our reconciliation, and that's where Shirley does her, uh, work to make sure that the bills that, uh, we pay and the line items that, that I put on that check are reflected on this report, showing that it came out of that particular part of the budget. And, um, reconciliations, um, if she doesn't balance, believe me, I get a call, and then we get to clarify. Shirley has actually been really good. Now, she, uh, during the holidays, she's going to be out of pocket, and so that's why I'm kinda anxious if Davis Heineman and Company decide they wanna do our, our, um, audit during the, the Christmas holidays. Our accountant is not going to be available. The good thing about QuickBooks Online is that she has turned all of the information over to Davis Heineman and Company, so they can look at everything that has come, uh, come in and gone out, uh, via the internet. So they don't have to spend as much time in the office getting me to pull documents to, for them to review and look at. They will come, because they look at those documents to make sure that we've got copies available. Okay, my four minutes is way gone. Let's see, we just got our Ivanhoe, uh, tax, ad valorem taxes in for, uh, November, and, um, the tax for Ivanhoe North, actually, uh, they have a balance of five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars in that portion that goes back to 2010, that one year when that city was in existence, so we still have just under six thousand dollars worth of unpaid taxes, penalties, and interest in that. For the City of Ivanhoe, um, with a tax balance of all the years that the city has been in existence, there's a total of eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and eight cents. Now, of that, fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-one cents is from 2010 to not this year, because we haven't gone delinquent yet. Uh, that'll happen January thirty-first or February the first. So there's still fifty-seven thousand, eight hu, uh, five hundred and eighty dollars, some odd cents, that is unpaid in delinquent taxes for Ivanhoe, and that, after 2010, um, takes into account that portion of the city that was Ivanhoe North. Kind of an explanation there. Our collection rate's currently at ten point five percent. Uh, we collected sixty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-six cents in November, um...
A ten percent is of the delinquent tax number?
I'm sorry?
The ten percent is the collection rate of the delinquent tax number?
No, no, our collection rate is how much we have actually collected on our current year taxes.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that, and appreciate you getting clarification. Uh, fourteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifteen cents went into the interest and sinking fund. As you'll recall, we will be paying a total of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, some odd dollars. There'll be a payment in April for the interest, and then the full payment of the interest, or the principal, and the remaining interest will go into, um, Abegy Bank for paying the bond back. It'll be nine years before the city can move forward with saying, okay, we have some overage, and we want to pay off on that bonded indebtedness and get that leveled down, just to let you know. Nine years before we can do that. Now we're down to seven. Okay, the Tyler County Appraisal District budget is paid quarterly. That's the appraisals that the, the appraisal district does for us. Listen, you got a copy of that breakdown, and, uh, we've got a quarterly payment coming up by the end of this month of seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Let's see, oh joy, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act includes five hundred and fifty billion dollars in new spending, approximately half of that going to the US Department of Transportation. Hopefully, that'll turn out in some better roads for us when we get on the highways. We're going to see just how much the city is going to get out of that, because, um, let's see, how's it going? Five hundred and fifty billion in new spending is a hundred and ten billion for investments in aging roads and bridges. Now, how much is the state of Texas going to take away from that? Uh, well, based on numbers from the White House, twenty-six point nine billion for federal aid highway apportion programs, three point three billion to improve public transportation options, two point nine billion to improve water infrastructure, one point two billion for you being able to fly out of the air... $1.2 billion for you being able to fly out of the airports and back into the airports without a rough ride when you get on the ground. $537 million for bridge replacement repairs, $408 million to support the expansion of an electric vehicle charging network, $100 million to help provide broadband coverage, $53 million to help protect against wildfires, and $42 million to protect against cyber attacks. That's the big word these days lately. Seems like every time you turn around, you hear about some organization or some entity being caught with ransomware. And we're going to be definitely keeping an eye on any grants that come along that we can put towards protecting our electronic technology service. Okay. That's it. Any more questions? I'm sorry. Everybody's gone to sleep on me.
Nope, we're awake.
I'm sorry?
You got undivided attention.
Well, I appreciate that. Okay, now, we have on the, on the agenda for approval of the September, approval of the October, and approval of the November financials, so.
Do we need separate?
Do we have to?
Yes.
We can't do one blanket?
Yes, yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we approve the financial statement for September 2021.
I second that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I make a motion that we accept the financial report for October 2021.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I make a motion to base up the November financial report.
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right.
Thank you. And Shirley is, oh, I intended to say, our auditing firm informed us that we really did need to have somebody who was a financial expert of sorts to oversee this. And that kind of took it out of my hands because we're now with QuickBooks Online. And so Shirley is serving in that position. Which is why I say, if you have any questions that I can't answer and respond to from the day-to-day operations and with the finances, then I will get ahold of Shirley, and either she will tell me so I can pass it along, or I will get her in touch with whichever one wants to talk about it directly.
All right. Thank you so much, CD.
Thank you.
You did a good job, actually, in a short period of time.
I don't know if I'd go that far.
Okay, there is nothing to update in, as far as the entevidos proceeding, there's no update on that. So, and there's no reason to go into executive session right now. Any communications from the audience via the internet? Okay. Council comments?
I have a question.
All right.
What does, what does the status have our sign up front?
Okay.
When are we going to change?
The sign up front. Okay. It's, right now, I'm waiting, we're, we're waiting for, we, first, we had to have the roof. And now, what I'm waiting for is them to get the internet connected so that we can, and this is rarity, we're waiting for that to happen so that we can, we're going to put a computer, a little small, older laptop that we have, and we're going to put that in the substation and have an antenna, you know, have it being, the signal sent over there. And then Brandon's setting it up so that we can access that computer remotely from here. And then we'll have that thing going, and we're going to be doing some really good stuff on it. But until we get it to where we can access it, right now, the only thing that we can do is go and plug a wire in there and sit there, and, and that's kind of inconvenient, so.
Inside the shack?
Well, that's where it will be. The, there'll be.
But right now?
Right now, if we had to.
Or do you have to do it outdoors?
Outdoors.
So when's all this going to, it's been in the works for a while, hasn't it?
Yes. And I, I ran into Brandon the other day and asked him once again, you know, when this was all going to happen. And I have gotten this.
Are we paying for them to do it, or are they doing it at their expense or pro bono?
Okay, councilman, the cost of the equipment that was originally planned for there, the city was going to be paying for, that's gone away now. The city's providing the laptop. And so, as the mayor mentioned, it'll be remote control from here so that we can send the information that we want to go on the sign to that laptop. It'll be wireless over to the sign then. And so there's no cost on that. As far as the installation, I believe Brandon's going to be taking care of that.
So, what are we waiting on? Brandon? Do we need to get an IT guy in here to do that?
Somebody that, you know.
It could be that he's waiting on equipment. Because if he's going to set it up wireless to communicate over to the sign, he may be waiting on some sort of receiver.
I also.
Bottom line is, we don't know.
I'm sorry. I also know that, that Rarity has been swamped. They have had a bunch of folks that have been moving in, and they're wanting to work remotely from Ivanhoe. And so that's put a load on them getting installations.
They're also working in Wildwood, too, now.
Correct.
So, all I can, all I can do is bug Brandon. Well, you can bug Brandon, he's your neighbor.
Yeah, I can do that. So, that.
Well, I'll bug Brandon.
Yeah, we'll all bug you.
Okay, there we go.
So that bodes a question about the IT security assessment. I mean, where are we with that?
Actually, I believe that that was on last month's agenda that got canceled, and it didn't roll over. I was hoping to, to see that for discussion myself. Is this a council comment moment?
I, I think we're getting into something that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I do, too. My bad. But, but, I mean, I just wanted to bring it back to the surface, that's all.
It's, it sounds like more and more, in general, in society and in government, it's becoming a, a higher priority to make sure that everybody's ducks are in a row. So I think we're, thank you for re-upping that one.
We need some grant money for that.
I think we got some.
Right. Okay. And we need to, we need to prepare before a council meeting so that we have something to talk about when we actually get here and put it on the agenda? So that we have some sort of idea, proposal, whatever? Well, what, IT, okay, we put IT on the agenda, what does that mean?
Yeah.
We sit and talk about it, and then nothing happens, and we go the next month, it's on the agenda again, and it doesn't, you know, what does that look like? What, what motions?
Well, it didn't even get on the agenda this time.
Well, I know.
Well, we've, we've, we've had an outside proposal for, for, for the service. If we want to go out for additional bids for other people to see what other people are offering as far as an assessment goes, that's something that we don't necessarily need to, we don't need to be, that's not, doesn't seem like a council decision to me.
We approved the money as a separate item on the budget, the $2,500 that Rarity said they would do it for. And that, that normally it would cost somewhere around $10,000 for another firm to come in and do it.
I don't know that we approved that or not.
No, no, we were talking about the full IT structure that is a whole different bottle of wax.
Not, well, there was.
That was, that was just for an assessment to go through.
Yeah, yeah.
And put together a, a plan and a strategy and say, here's all your pros and cons and strengths, strengths and weaknesses.
And, and that's what has moved, has not moved forward.
A decision on that has not moved forward, I believe. The, the last I recall was that we were determining whether or not we wanted to go out for additional bids from other providers, or if we wanted to go with Rarity, or if.
I got, I got a name for you to put in the document. Make contact.
Okay, we're really getting off subject.
We're getting, going down a.
So, CD, we need to put this on next month's agenda.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second.
Ah, wait a minute. My comment is, have a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and stay safe, everybody, and, and love to everybody. Okay, now, go ahead.
Okay. I, I second your comment. And I make a motion that we adjourn.
Aye. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, go. Yeah, I made that announcement. It'll be Saturday, don't forget, at 3:00, and it, viewing at 2:00.